Good evening, I'll call this meeting the Carter's Little City Council to order. If you will see, please stand for our invitation and pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father, we pray together tonight for peace in the world and the unity of all people. We pray for all those enrolled in authority, for the city of Cartersville, and for all those who live and work here. And in this most holy of weeks, we pray for the safe travels of those who travel on land, water, and air. Finally, we give you thanks for your presence with us tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the floor, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3. Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Prout, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you Connie. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from April 3rd. A council you've had this well in advance of tonight, had an opportunity to review those. Chair would be willing to entertain any edits, corrections, additions, deletions, or motions.
Didn't see any corrections or deletions. Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion of second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. Now, we do have an item that we're going to add to the agenda tonight. I know that's why a number of you are here this evening. Councilman Stepp was doing probably what's more important than being here, even that. He's looking after his son's baseball team and he's running just a few minutes behind. So, we're going to move on with our agenda until he gets here, and once he gets here, we'll take up that item, get that taken care of so that you're certainly welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting afterwards, but in the event that you have other plans, we'll get you upon your, get you back to your evening plans. So Randy, if you'll start us off with the first reading of the Wine and Specialty Shops ordinance.
Thank you Mayor and Council. As requested by council, Mr. Lovell had drafted up some amendments to the alcohol control ordinance as dealing with wine specialty shops with that. The ordinance allows for packaged wine shops with wine tasting along with purchases, and that went to the Alcohol Control Board. Alcohol Control Board did review that ordinance, and there were some discussions on, you know, looking at it downtown and thought it may be a worthy effort in downtown, and so they did amend the original ordinance that was originally sent to them to restrict it at this current time to the downtown business district. If it is something that does work, they would be agreeable to hear future amendments of that if it was wanted to be expanded beyond the downtown business district area. With that, the Alcohol Control Board did recommend this ordinance for your approval.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? No vote this evening since this is the first reading of an ordinance, and we'll take this up at our meeting on May 1st. Mr. Anderson, you have an ordinance revision of your own.
Yes, Your Mayor and Council, this is for the rules at the Cartersville Civic Center that Cartersville City Council sets these policies. And this is an addition to our rules on adult entertainment. This was, Mr. Lovell drafted this, and I recommend approval of this ordinance.
Greg, do people sign anything when they come in and do a contract and getting ready for a function? Do they sign it indicating they have read, over it?
Yes ma'am, they, they're given an application and a reservation form, and they fill these out, and you know, yet they still, certain things they don't think applies to.
Did we have a problem like this about a year ago?
Yes, sir, we sure did.
This would apply, Greg, to the birthday kind of things where people show up in dance costume and so, this would apply to all of that kind of.
All adult entertainment, if, if even the, I guess I'd say the Hooters girls want to come out, this right here would not allow that if they were dressed in something, I guess skimpy clad or something like that.
That mean I can't have a party.
Yeah, David's not going to be able to have his retirement party up there in a hundred years.
I guess to be more accurate, people can be in costume, those can't be out of their costume.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Thank you Greg. This is again a first reading, we'll take this up at our first meeting in May, and you have the next couple items Greg that are bid awarded purchases.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council, this is for a dump bid for the truck chassis that City Council approved two or three meetings ago. The low bid is from Ingram Truck and Body in the amount of $7,550, and I recommend approval on that.
Any questions for Greg on this item? And if there's none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I wish approval for the low bid Ingram Truck but.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item Greg.
Yes, Sir Mayor, this is a budgeted item also for a 60-inch zero-turn rear discharge mower. This would bring our mowers up to three. We have sent, well advertised our bids, received 12 bids back, which was, which was great. Out of those 12 bids, seven did not make, did not meet specifications either by not having the right size horsepower or did not have a floating deck. Out of the five that did meet specifications, we recommend the low bid from Haney Farm and Supply in the amount of $9,275.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Greg, when we put these specs out, do most of, the information's online.
Yes.
They can print this form that we're looking at.
That is correct.
And they can send it by mail, or they can also send it back by email.
That's, that is correct.
Online. So some people just go with the spec even though they know they're not going to meet it, just to see, just to keep.
Well, I can't answer why, I do know that, because I, we did a lot of notes, we, we brought this, this Grasshopper in to demo, but the ones that did not meet it, the rear discharge which we request, that reduces horsepower in a, in a mower, so they're not rated as high. So these mowers did not meet the specifications that we've, we've had. We've used the same specifications for, for the last three years. And in years past, we've always bought, the low bid has always been Taylor's, but that's not, it's not the case this year. Grasshopper was, you know, met the specifications and was the low bid.
I guess my real question is, if they don't respond, are they off the list? I mean, do people respond knowing they can't meet the specs, just to make sure they're notified of the next one that comes up?
Well, that, that could be it, but, but this one, you know, again, we notified our local distributors, but we posted on the city's website, which is where we got all these others at. You know, we, we sent specs to Taylor's, to John Deere, or to, and to Franklin Ford, and that's were the ones that we were going to settle with, but that's what we end up getting 12.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Greg. Mr. Porter, you've got the next item, please.
Yes, ma'am, this item is a replenishment of stock for inventory for fiber, 24-count, 36-count, and 60-count. We've used some over the past several years on the Main Street, Gateway, Tennessee Street projects. Asked for approval up to 14,000, which will cover the cost of the fiber and the freight to get it here, and again, it's a kind of replenishment of stock that we've needed over the, we've used over the past couple of years, and it's a budget item.
Okay. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on Dan.
Yes, it's a resolution. We've been part of the GMA lease pool since 1998. It's allowed us to buy assets, vehicles particularly over the past several years at a low interest rate through GMA, and they have many cities that are part of this. Due to some changes in the federal regulations with the Dodd-Frank Act, JP Morgan who underwrites this program for the GMA has fallen under their mark-to-market value and have to meet collateralization. So they have to come to us, and we have to set up a custody account. Again, this is through some federal regulation. It kind of wasn't when the program was started, things have changed since 9/11, and these new regulations have come to effect. The fees that were associated with this have, you know, instead of passing this on to JP Morgan, they're asking all cities pay that. It's going to be a couple hundred dollars, probably a year for us just to do this. Again, it's a savings where interest rate's been variable, it's been less than 1% for many years for this. Recommend approval of the resolution and all paperwork that the mayor and city clerk have to sign off on.
Mayor, I was wondering if legal had had a chance to look up this.
Yep, it's noted.
Yes, Keith has reviewed this.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Dan. Mr. Jones, you've got the next item, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, we have before you a change order number one for our Edouard Emergency River Pump Station. This change order total amount is for $92,722.55. This involves several field changes that were made and replacement of a piece of casing that was damaged or broken and damaged during construction. Would recommend your approval in that amount.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for two things, an engineering services agreement and a task order with Peoples and Quigley for a drainage study and production of a set of construction drawings for a detention and water quality facility that we want to install on Carter Street. And the total is $7,950, not to exceed, and we will pay for this out of the stormwater utility money, and we recommend approval.
I have a question.
Yes, Sir.
When you first mentioned this, I had to think, there's a large ditch that's running up behind there with Kudzu, you name it, on Carter Street, right beside that private park. What are we planning on doing to improve the appearance of it or?
Well, that's, you're right at the exact location. In fact, the whole, the parking lot at the county courthouse drains into that ditch and ends up going into that area, those lots. And right now, there's a, there's a ditch that feeds that, those two lots, and then there's a pipe that's sort of about half buried that, where the water goes out. And what we plan on doing is having Peoples and Quigley do the study and determine what kind of outlet structure and improvements to make in there to get it to function better. Could, because it's an ideal location to detain stormwater in, during flood conditions, and also to hopefully get, treat that water for water quality while we have it detained. And, and as soon as, you know, the flood conditions are over, it'll have a weir and a drain hole where, you know, when it's not raining, it'll, it'll be dry. You know, it won't be a wet pond, it'll be a dry pond, but, but hopefully during flood conditions, we'll be able to benefit the area downstream.
I think that's the location about 15 years ago where there were, there was a house or two that we took out of the way and did some work on, and this is an extension of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, then the Chair will entertain a motion. Most may approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tom, why don't we go ahead and do the last item that you've got here, and then we'll, we'll move forward. You've got the next item, Habitat for Humanity quitclaim deed, and then we'll hold off on the financial report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this quitclaim deed is for 22 and 24 Martin Luther King Drive. It's to convey the ownership of that, of those two houses to the Barto Area Habitat for Humanity. The houses have been completed for some time now, and the deed was overlooked in the, in the closing documents. It has been reviewed by legal counsel, and I recommend approval for the mayor to sign.
Okay. Questions or discussion, and if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Tom. I will entertain a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So, Mayor.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. We have an appeal from Mellow Mushroom regarding a decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission on Tuesday evening. I do want to comment just very briefly, certainly we want to have as many council members here as we can. I mentioned Jason was, did you win? Did you lose? Did y'all keep score?
We were up 3 to 0 in the second inning, and I had to leave.
Okay. Thank you for being here, we appreciate you being a good dad and doing that. Mr. Councilman Tonsmire, with this being Holy Week, has responsibilities with his church with it being Holy Thursday, and he'd let us know well in advance that he couldn't be here tonight. But in the interest of, of time and making sure that we can get a timely response to this, to this appeal, felt it prudent to add this to the agenda this evening. I'll start off simply by saying that everybody in this room, I think if you, if you watch or listen to City Council on any regularity, you know that just about every meeting goes exactly like we've done to this point. Occasionally, there are things we've got to talk about and where we all may not agree, but what we do all agree on, that everybody in this room are friends, neighbors, and have a deep passion for the city of Cartersville, and we can speak, speak to the issue, we make a decision, and, and we move on. So with that being said, I will ask Mr. Kenny, who's representing Mellow Mushroom, to step forward and address council from that point, and anybody that comes up and speak, if you'll please give your name and your address for our clerk. After your comments, we'll open up the floor, have a public hearing, we're going to limit each side to, to 10 minutes. Count, Mr. Archer will be the timekeeper for that. Okay? Again, your name and your.
My name is Frank Kenny, and I'm an owner partner in the Mellow Mushroom across the street, and I want to thank y'all for letting us attend tonight. We are dealing with an historic issue, that's why we're here. So I kind of wanted to run through some things that we have brought back from the original building, over 100-year-old building. Does everyone have this? There are copies down here. Well, as y'all can see, the top left is the building, I'm guessing it's in the 40s or 50s. I know the building's much older than that, but that's kind of a reference what we're going at. If you look at the building, on the top left, on the up, on the top floor, there was three large windows. Antonino's, I don't know if they had them before them, or Deering Antonino's, but those, you know, the far left, far right window were bricked over. We have since opened those back up to its original form. And if you turn the page, on the Main Street side, there was a infill window on the Main Street corner. We reopened that. Of course, there's wood there right now, but the windows are coming at the end of next week, so it'll be glass there by the end of next week. Turn the page one more time, please. The upper, upper floor windows on Main Street just needed to be replaced, and we did so. But we also, the lower floor windows, we have restored those. I'm not sure how long they're bricked over, but they were bricked over, and we restored those back to the original form. And if you turn the page again, it's just kind of the finished product of what we've done. So we feel we have done a lot to restore the historic value to, to this building. We've also replaced the roof, repaired a fire that happened, we think it was like 40, 50 years ago, and the, and one of the walls, we, we've just done a lot of work in the building, and we're taking it very seriously. But this gets us to the last page, which is obviously why we're here. If you look at the picture on the left, there's a column of brick right there, right next to the wood. That's the brick that's an issue right now. Behind that is what you see on the right, different plumbing, sprinkler system, and we have a, pretty much a closet around that. So when you're on the inside, you don't see this picture on the right. But if we didn't have that brick there, which, the brick was put there primarily just for support of the building, because during construction, the building moved whenever we were doing it, so we did that to support the building. We didn't do that just because we thought brick would look nice there, but we did that because we, we felt it was a necessity to support the structure of the building for the long term, and that's why that brick is there. And at the meeting the other night, they were wanting, you know, the historic committee was wanting us to remove that.
Mr. Kenny, I have a question.
Yes, Sir.
The plumbing work and the electrical work that's along the wall that's on, on the opposite side of the brick column.
Hmm.
How long was that there and was that in the plans?
How long was it in plans?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you didn't have to, in the original plans, it didn't include the brick column, was that electrical work and that plumbing work already slated to be there? Was there a modification that had to be made at some point that necessitated it?
To my best belief, it was in there. Now, I think it had to be moved a foot or two maybe. Architect would be the best person to ask that, but, but we, that was the only way they could go into the building from the outside, underground, up and under, is that point right there. That might have been modified some, and if anyone has, remembers what Kirby says, I know that it might got modified a little bit, but when they did all the work underneath, that was the only place it could go under. We would much rather just wish it was supported itself, but I just think, we think that this is the best issue, best way to handle it.
If it would have supported itself, what would you have done?
Do what?
If brick wasn't needed, what would be there?
If the building didn't move when we were doing construction, it would just be more glass right there.
So, but I think that goes back to Matt's question, how would you hide the, you know, obviously those were going to be there originally. How would those have been hidden?
Well, that's a good point, and I'm, the architect would be the best to answer that. I'm not sure exactly, does, do you remember last, when he, y'all asked that exact question at the historic meeting, do you remember what he said?
It would have been invisible.
Okay.
It would have been invisible?
Yeah, so that goes back to, we did it mainly for structural thing, we didn't, you know, we didn't want to just hide it with brick, because it did, you know, take away from less window space, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I'm assuming that brick will be painted like the rest.
Yes, Sir.
That's a topic for another evening that has nothing to do with this conversation.
If we're allowed.
But I'm saying right now, it sticks out, but in the future, it, you won't know that that's new brick there, it'll always be painted.
Correct. If we're allowed to, yes, we want to paint that.
That's not answered yet.
We don't know that.
They have to go back to where the HPC.
May I ask a question?
Please. Ms. Tate has the floor.
As we look at this across, at one time, all of that was going to be just solid glass. So we're talking about right here on the original. Is that right?
Correct.
Am I correct? So inside, this will be boxed and, and not visible.
Right, it already is boxed, of course, we'll have to, we can remove that, but yes, it's, it's boxed in now.
So if this went on glass and there was a support post or something versus all of that ripped in, is, is that not a part of the original design? I understand in demolition.
If you look at the original design, there actually is some, some being there, this goes back almost a year ago, but there is, but not 40 inches wide. I think it was more about 12 inches, 10 inches? It was 10 inches, so we went from 10 inches to 40 inches for support.
One reason I think we're here tonight discussing this is that this is after the fact, in other words, this was put in and then went to HPC to.
Correct.
Discuss it, is that right?
And we apologize for that, but when they're, when they're doing all the work, the building was moving, they just made a decision. Now, we are perfectly okay with removing it. I mean, we can. We're just hoping to ask that we don't have to do that, and we can, you know, keep it the way it is for structural purposes.
Did all of this come out? Everything below the balcony, all of that was removed?
Yes, there was a lot, there was original windows before, a long time ago, but they did some covering on it. I'm, I'm not the best construction guy, but they'd add some wood and some cider around it and other things. So we brought it back to big windows with no covering around them.
You brought this back?
The lower floor.
Here.
And the upper floor. You see the lower floor?
I can. You mean here, looking at the small.
Yes, the lower floor had very large windows originally. Antonino's did a lot of covering up. I'm not sure if it was Antonino's or whoever's there before them, but they did a lot of covering around the windows, and we, we're just, we're opening it back up to the way it was originally.
Doesn't, doesn't this ruin your idea of the design as a, you, you are one of the franchise holders.
Yes, I'm an owner partner of that, of that right there.
Doesn't this, doesn't this ruin your idea of what you were envisioning?
No, ma'am, it does not.
Okay.
Anyone else at this point?
I mean, we're going to have glass there, it's going to look a lot better whenever, whatever it's done, but, no, ma'am, it doesn't.
The, okay, if I'm looking at how it looked when it was Antonino's.
Hmm.
It looks to me like that place where there's brick now was just a wooden door. Am I?
It was a door.
Here.
That was a door.
So it was wood covered up then anyway, right?
Yes. They had a door to go up, there's a stairway that goes right there and goes up.
Right.
And that, and they had a frame around the door for that.
So it was a covered wooden door that was there?
Yes.
All right. And so you don't know if the, if there was any, any utilities, electrical.
There was not. There was not. It was a doorway and went straight up the hallway.
There might have been a light switch, if I remember correctly, to turn the light on as you went up the stairs.
I'm trying to remember that, yeah, okay.
And the stairway also was very flimsy, and we, we replaced that too, it's very solid. But two stairways, one in the back and the side.
There's still, there's stairs now?
You felt the stairs rocking when you're walking up the stairs before.
Okay.
And now that's, you know, we replaced pretty much everything, except we kept the original brick inside also.
Right.
That has not been touched, that's still exposed, but we replaced.
Where the, where the electrical.
That, and if you go in the main entrance on the right, there's a huge portion of original brick that we're keeping.
It's still there?
Yeah, we're keeping it.
Stairs, I don't know, part that was weak when you walked.
The what, sir?
The stairs, that was the only weak spot?
Well, the also, we, we brought the, the second floor up the code as far as the second floor and replaced, I said the fire, there was a fire at some point in that building too. But we replaced a lot of things in that building, and we're investing a lot into downtown Cartersville.
But before we get too off track with all the questions, the reason the brick is there is primarily because the building was sinking.
Correct.
And you had to support it.
Correct.
It's not to hide anything from the outside or the inside, it was structurally necessary to hold the building.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just, just so I will know how this works, when a person buys into the franchise of a Mellow Mushroom, I know how some of the others work, stake and shake and so forth. Does the design concept come from cooperation to the franchise owners or the other way?
It's a blend, it's 50/50. They feed off us, and then they go back and do their work, and then they come back to us, and then we all decide, takes about two, three months, and then there's also some changes that come on around, you know, over that next few nine months, but it's not, they're not, they don't say this is what we're going to do. We, we have the right to say no to anything, just like they can say no, they don't like that. And it's, but it's not like. And it's, but it's not like, it's very, everyone looks at everyone's opinions. But we do have an art team, a very successful art team. And they're using, they're using a local artist to do a lot of the artwork. And they incorporate that into our theme. But it's very, it's a team effort.
The corporation doesn't dictate?
No, ma'am.
To our franchise.
No, they have the right to say no if we say we want to, you know, do something, you know, something that they don't, they have the right. We have the right to say no to it though, so.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Kenny, at this point? Thank you, sir. I will open up the floor for discussion.
Can I get my?
Yeah, have a seat. Yeah, make yourself comfortable.
No, ma'am, I didn't know if you wanted me to ask some people.
No, no, well, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
I'll call on anybody that'd like to speak at this hearing. And again, if you'd call your name and your, yes, step forward, name and address. And we may extend that ten minutes base. I want to make sure that the ten minute and ten minute was to make sure that both sides would have equal time. So I'll use my own kind of timer. You keep up with the time over there.
You're asking me to keep time and now you're done, it's your fault.
You said you weren't going to talk tonight, just keep time. And I'll tell you when it's ten minutes. Mr. Gregory, go right ahead.
Mayor and Council, I'm Lawrence Gregory, better known as Larry. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I have information here from all the meetings, all the minutes, everything else, so I can answer any questions that you have. My, a couple of my comments first off, from what he had talked about before. When his architect came originally and presented us and everything, we went through it and checked it all out. And we approved everything that they asked for, basically. Then they were coming back to make the changes. The day before, on Monday afternoon, before all of our meetings, I'd go around and check everything that's coming up. Take pictures, you know, I personally walk it. I never get on the property, sidewalks and everything, homes, everything. When I came by that day, they were building a brick wall. I've got pictures of it. I came immediately to the Planning Commission, informed them. And then we had the meeting the next night.
The Planning Commission or the HPC?
I talked to Catherine and Richard downstairs, which is HPC.
Okay.
Then, so they knew that was going on, but the meeting was the next night. When the gentleman came in, Mr. Pate, the architect, came into their meeting and presented his thing, his presentation to us, what they wanted to do and everything. Before we went any further, I asked a question about the wall that was not presented at all in the first thing. I have drawings, they're original drawings. If you, I don't know if you would like to see them or not, but I have them right here. And he says, oh, you know, he didn't, it wasn't presented, I questioned it. He says, oh, yeah, we knew we should have come to see, we knew that it wasn't approved. And we're sorry for that. And then proceeded to say that it was to hide a sprinkler system. And I've got the minutes and you can get the exact wording out of them if you'd like for me to read them. No mention was ever made, and this is after the brick wall was built. No mention was ever made of support at all. The only thing of support came up when, all right, let me, before I'm getting ahead of myself. At that meeting, Mr. Lovell, when I, after we questioned it and we went through and approved some other things, it was basically the vote was three to one, three, four, one against. Myself was the one against it. They, the question was asked about the wall, what was, how we proceed with the wall. Mr. Lovell said that the inspectors and the Historic Division should go look at it and make a decision. And then it would have to be addressed at the next meeting. All that's in the minutes. At our meeting last, or Tuesday night, again, Mr. Pate, the architect, came in and says, I don't know why I'm here like this. Which, you know, they definitely did because it was in the minutes. Then he proceeded to say that it was a support issue. That's the first we'd heard of a support issue. Now, in the time when I found out that they were coming back to appeal or to try to change that, I'm a very detail-oriented person. I go through and check every job, every one. I'd go through and look at all the regulations and rate it. And I have had a list of twelve separate items. Two from the Secretary of the Interior, two from, or actually, three from the State of Georgia, and eight from the City of Cartersville. All the ones from the City of Cartersville listed in our guidelines are listed as requirements. Those were all the violations. You can't do that wall. It's just not, it's not allowed. And I can quote the things if you would like for me to. I believe you have a list of those. Do y'all have a list of the sections, all of the stuff? So that's why I'm here. From our point, we documented, we voted, we talked about it. So if you have any questions about what happened at the meetings, I have my documentation here.
Do you have the minutes where it states that he was hiding that bike?
Yes.
Was that the July sixteenth meeting?
I believe so.
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth. It's in my package.
March eighteenth.
I don't have it.
Actually, if you don't mind, I know it sounds a little bit, if you would please read it. And the only reason for that is typically if something's given to council, it needs to be distributed to everybody.
Passed around, I'm sorry.
And I'm best, but I can hear, no, no offense, I just, it might be a little bit more tedious to read it, but I think then everybody in the room can be included.
These are the minutes of the Cartersville Preservation Commission for the meeting of March eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, at City Hall. I don't need, should I read?
Just the highlighted parts of the points that answer Ms. Hodge's question.
Mr. Gregory asked about the addition of the brick to the first floor window. It was narrow, it narrowed the window by a few feet. Mr. Pate knows it was not approved and that he should have come before the HPC. He then apologized. He explained that the brick was, that behind the brick was the fire pump for the sprinkler system. Mr. Gregory explained that the front of the building was no longer symmetrical. And we moved on to appraisal.
But that doesn't say that he was hiding it. It just says he.
It said, he was saying it was there, basically what he said was it was there to cover up the fire pump for the sprinkler system. And, but there was never a mention of support, and these are minutes. So, and you're more than welcome to, they're public records, so.
And that gentleman that you're referring to in that meeting is the same one that came back the following meeting and?
Yes.
And talked with y'all again?
Yes, would you like me to read that section?
No, I was just trying to make sure I understood where we were.
Kirby Pate is his name, he's their architect.
Lady, I have a question for you. I read through all the minutes today online. I don't have the packet that Mr. Archer's referring to. But as I was looking through, like there was one meeting, there were seven items that came up. And it seemed to me on all seven items that there was compromise, that there was working with. One was windows going from wood to vinyl, one was, at that time, they were still talking about rooftop dining. There was stairway, maybe some stucco to include. In other words, my point is, it appeared to me, reading those minutes, that there really was a will to work with and welcome a business into our city.
We approached a number of things besides just the windows. There were windows they were talking about. And I have pictures of what the front did look like. But it was, we thought, we approved things such as a, for lack of a better word, a statue type of a thing to be put on the outside of the building. It wasn't really a mural, it was more of a metal. At the time, it was supposed to be a metal cut out of a little boy fishing. We approved an awning, we approved everything else. We talked about the painting scheme, but since HPC cannot do anything about paint, we passed on over that, we had a little discussion. And, you know, a number of other things. I've got them here. I can name them off one by one if need be.
But my point is that there was working with. And didn't the canvas awning go to a metal awning? Wasn't that a part of the change?
It was supposed to be a canvas awning. At the second meeting, when they were changing their things, they changed it to the balcony, which was approved.
So the balcony becomes the awning, really?
Yes, it takes the place of the awning.
I misspoke, thank you.
And if, and if I may, and I certainly, I appreciate all the conversation. I want to dial this back into specifically why we're here tonight. I think everybody, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree that, you know, there's been a substantial investment in this building. And that based on all the information and seeing, there's been some compromises at the City of Cartersville and the HPC has worked with them to, you know, in a number of different areas to try to get this project completed. Yes, whatever, I mean, I think we got general consensus on that. If it's our, anybody else, I'd like to kind of zero in on the case in hand. Yes, Mr. Secretary.
Excuse me, but you're out of order because ten minutes.
Rewind and keep going. Not according to my watch tonight. So I'd really like to get back to why we're here tonight, which is the column, the three-foot by, I guess roughly twelve-foot column that was put in place. And I guess I would ask with, since we've agreed that there's been compromise and there's been working back and forth, why do you feel that this particular change, that there's not room for compromise? And I guess, let me phrase it a different way, because, and I'll be the first to admit, you know, y'all go through training and all these other things, I'm looking at things from about thirty thousand feet.
Sure.
The issue of symmetry has come up. I've seen it in the minutes. Ms. Tate and I have spoken several times over the last day about the building being taken out of symmetry. I think Mr. Goss referred to, it was referred to in the minutes of the meeting as well. Is symmetry of a building, is that, and again, I'm not asking to be flippant or anything, is it a requirement? Is it just a preference? Is it somebody's preferred way of having a building look? I don't, I don't know that. And I'd just like to get some direction there.
I understand, I understand. Let's see. Okay, as some of the things that we're listing, just I'm going to use a couple of different things.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to use the City of Cartersville. If we get into the state and the others, it also addresses that problem. But I'm just looking at the City of Cartersville. Item number two, about here says, basically, original design character listed as a requirement. These are our, what this is, this is our downtown business district guidelines.
Right.
Respect the original design character of the building, analyze the building to determine which elements are essential to character. Genuine heritage of historic downtown district should be expressed. Okay, then there's another one. Rehabilitation works, this is group number four. Rehabilitation works should not destroy the distinguishing characters of the property or its environment, which in a downtown storefront is the storefront. I'll get to that in just a second. Okay, sods, requirement. The elements of the sods should remain as closely as possible to those of the original structure using existing originals and materials whenever possible. So again, that's, and it's got the different pictures, that's to keep the same proportions.
Which they have done so far, they've gone back to more originality than the building was previous.
Okay, let me, this may be not where you're trying to go. From our perspective and all the training that we've done and everything we've done here, what it was for the past twenty or thirty years is not what matters. It's what it was originally. You go back to the original character. Those windows were not there. You can look at, he said he had a picture, I didn't see the pictures. But if you look at the, I don't know what the large pictures, I don't know what it is, it's hard for me to talk on that. But if you have the picture where it's got the three windows with the awnings on it, made from like the forties, you will see that there were plate glass windows in that thing. It was not the, the one that was there when Antonino's was there. Basically.
Like storefront windows?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, it was a storefront. And if you go back to some of the earlier pictures when Sam Franklin's was in there and that sort of thing, it's back when it was. This is what you're referring to as to what it looked like before they started.
Yes.
And see, this is all added in. And since, this would have been added in since Sam Franklin's left the building and moved up. And then three or four other things have been in there since then. So this is a very modern, before we had a downtown district and we had roads. So what we need to do is try to go back to the original. You know, so it's basically here, another requirement on storefronts. Replacement should be based on historical research and physical evidence and be compatible with nearby historical buildings. Which if you look at all the other buildings around, they're all symmetrical. You have same-sized storefront windows. They're not broken up unless they've been built home since then. And again, I have numerous other things, but I feel like I'm belaying the point. Let me read this last one, talks about storefront windows. Requirements. Retain the large display windows characteristic of the commercial buildings in their original size, shape, and proportions. When replacing glass or restoring windows, retain the original size and shape of the storefront openings. Do not fill in window spaces. And that's in our guidelines. And that's just the City of Carter, that's what, that's, I believe that's all the ones of the City of Cartersville that I used in there. So, I mean, if you're interested, I have the state and the federal. But it's not necessary because it's just repetitive. It just carries it on a line.
Something that just popped in my mind is you said, do not fill in window spaces. Which it appears as though this building had been filled in and filled in and filled in over the years. And they have, this is just in my opinion, they've opened up more windows to this building than they filled.
Again, what we look at is not what has been done unless it's an historical thing. If it's over fifty years, then it can be considered historical. And which means it would have been done in the late sixties or in the sixties now. Anything, and we moved into the building at twenty-one East Main Street in nineteen sixty-nine. So I've been very familiar with that building for forty-five years. All of that fill-in was not there when we moved in. That has been added in since, at least since nineteen sixty-nine. I can say that, I've got no pictures to show you or nothing like that. But I do know that it was not as it was when they started work. By the same token, I love for them to be here, I wish they would. Their storefront in Athens, you don't even, it fits right in with the thing. We were there this past weekend in training, we went by and looked at it. It fits right in. It don't, you know, conflict at all. Whereas this just goes against, and what they originally planned?
Well, we talking about, and I might be doing sort of like a mat here, but we're not talking about the building as a whole tonight. We're just talking about three feet by twelve feet.
We're talking, actually, the architects at our meeting stated it as it was forty inches of brick. So I don't know what it is, I have not, I have not measured it. But in our minutes, it's listed as forty inches.
But this building as it sits and as it's planned, everything has been approved other than this? These forty, okay.
Ms. Prue, you have a question?
I do want to ask something. In our guidelines, and I understand what our scope of review is and what we're looking for. In our guidelines, and I, I understand what our scope of review is and what we're looking for on, in evaluating your actions. And I appreciate all you do.
Sure.
I appreciate historic preservation. I really, really do. And I have been a supporter of Mellow Mushroom for a long, long time. That's great, too. But if you've got a situation, let's say before us an hour, before you, not us, before you, and your, your goal is to leave the windows open, but if you find that there's a structural issue with the building that, and, and let's just say that it is a structural issue, what do the guidelines then tell you is permissible at that point?
As a structural thing, I don't, I haven't researched that because that has not come up. Um, I would, if it came up, I would be the first one to go through and look at it, be digging it out to try to find out. I do not know. Structure was never mentioned till Tuesday night. That's the first time the word "structure" ever came into the discussion. And we've been doing this since March of 2013. It's in March, yeah, I believe it's March of 2013. So Tuesday night was the first time. So I, my personal feeling and my, the way I would lean toward if structure was an issue, you have to go to safety of the public first, which if it was a thing where it was going to fall or something, then it should be designed in. We actually asked the architect Tuesday night if there were alternatives. And he said, "Yes." He said, "We could go back in there and we could have done it at first and shore it up in a different place." He said, "It can be, we can add more steel in different places and do the adjustment to that." You know, and then, and take the others out. That may be in the minutes. Um, let me-
Well, we'll take your, we'll take your word for it.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a follow-up question to hers, if I may.
Sure.
My follow-up question, Lori, would be to Ron Goss, if he doesn't mind coming up, because he has done some old buildings. And, and I'm, I'm following up with your question of alternatives to a solid brick area. I'm, I'm focusing right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
And your name and address, please.
Ron Goss, 120 Cherokee Avenue.
Your question is, again, will you ever say that?
My question is, following up with Lori's question, is from a, uh, old, old building, and, and you've done many, an alternative to a solid brick, uh, change in the facade?
The, if I understood Mr. Pate correctly, when he was describing it, he was describing a sidewall of the building i- in that general area. But, uh, keep in mind, these storefronts were built like that. They stood for a hundred years. Um, this storefront had a wood structure under it. In theory, if there was a structural problem, it would have already, significant enough in that opening, it would have already been given signs. You wouldn't have been able to probably open the door that went up the steps. There would have been various signs. Um, yes, it can be supported. Pretty much every building that you see on Main Street that has a transom across the front is supported like that. The, sort of a follow-up, if I may, um, the, the challenge is, you don't get bonus points in the, in the process at the local, state, or federal level for, "Hey, we're doing a, we're making a substantial investment on this building." You know, two wrongs don't make a right. If you get, you know, once you start that, you sort of are committed to doing it the appropriate way and that's how it was approved. And it was approved before I was involved with HPC, so, um, but anyway, the, um, challenge, whichever level you look at it, state, federal, or local, is the fact that you have to look at historical references. That's what you've got. This building is not like the 1869 courthouse or the Grand Theater or some of our more ornate buildings. This building was a simple storefront. The simple storefront, the way it was designed, was a symmetrical building. Three windows a certain size, two storefronts, you know, two window openings a certain size. That is the historical significance of that building. That's, in theory, the, the direction that you're supposed to take it. You, again, you sort of don't get bonus points for, "Well, we're doing a good effort, so we get to bend the rules over here." It just don't work that way. If you were having this discussion at the federal level or the state level, it just, that, that doesn't fly. The, uh, it's very, when you read through this, and, and Mr. Gregory was having to fight with a lot of different issues. There was a series of them that just points out, "Do not do this. You're required to do this," blah, blah, blah. At, at the end of the day, that HPC cannot make a decision based on its opinion, its preference. And I, and I am as excited about Mellow Mushroom as anybody, and I, you know, bar none. We will be walking there many nights this summer. But I think in this process, you have to be blind to the applicant, um, to be fair to all people that come before that commission. The, um... The book says one thing. I think the commission appropriately address what this council has approved as its ordinance. Now, I think if you look a little bit farther, what you have to decide, is that commission, I, I guess, and, and you're the attorney, uh, you can correct me on this, your sole decision is, did that commission act inappropriately? Was, did they act with bias? Did they misinterpret? Um, and I think that's the sole question you have to ask yourself. I don't think it's your, your preference towards Mellow Mushroom or whoever. Um, you know, we have to govern in a blind manner. That's really, I think, the question that you have to ask, and I think based on the guidelines, it's very clear. Going back to the structural, Mr. Pate said there were other options that he was aware of before they ever infilled this. I think one of the challenges is, HPC has to make a decision as if that had never been bricked in. They can't look at it and say, "Oh, you've done this. Let us factor in." It's right or wrong whether it's been done or not. They made that decision. Um, the problem was, is Mr. Pate knew a month ago, and again, I was not on the commission at that time, but I was at that meeting. He knew there was a problem. If I would have probably been in his shoes, I would have probably stopped work at that point until I had a rule in to determine how I could move forward. I think the challenge that we're facing, and it came out a little bit earlier, the glass has been ordered. So I think there's a financial issue. That's probably the biggest purpose of the appeal.
He knew there was a problem in the fact that-
He knew there was a problem that he did not get that approved. He did not come before the commission and that that needed to be approved. And he was aware, a- as an observer, not as an HPC member, and a, a month ago, he was aware that he needed to come back and get that approved.
Let me ask you this. You mentioned about stopping work, and again, I know you've done a lot of work and you get into old buildings, and not being involved in construction, but somewhat being involved in business, a- as many of us are. I guess when I look at the reasonable, the reasonability of it, if you're, if you're in the middle of a construction project, you've got crews working there, uh, a situation comes up, I would think the first thing would be was, "We've got a problem. We've got to fix it," not, "I need to stop and wait two to three weeks or to however." And again, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, is, to me, the reason-
Again, the mindset of, of, of whether it's ownership or a construction project manager or an architect, I can't speak for them. I can't speak for their motives. I can't speak for, "Hey, you know what? We're just gonna walk this through."
Have you been in a situation where you've done that?
The first key is, is assess and plan ahead-
Right.
-for those things. Those things happen. And yes, I've had to stop and we moved to another part of the project. The, um, that's, in my opinion, would have, and again, that's not my project, but that would have probably been the wisest thing. The architect picked up on that, you know, four or five weeks ago.
Let me, and then if I could-
But that structural situation probably would have been revealed itself four or five months ago when they gutted the initial, I mean, you pretty much are assessing your structural at that point. That floor was out, what, over the holidays? So, I mean, it's been a while.
Let me ask you-
But I can't ju- I can't judge that because that's not my project.
Let me ask you again about the, the symmetry thing, because I'm still kind of hung up on that. Is that a, again, that might be what, is it a guideline? Is it a wish? Is it a-
It's a guideline. It's a required. It's a required at the, at the local, the state, and federal.
Required or a guideline?
It says the word "required" in your-
It's required. It's not a guideline. It's required.
There's, there's a lot of things that are recommended. There's a lot of things that are required. The requirement would be go back to that original once you start that process.
I got a question. Just, that brick that we're talking about, it being there, does that actually provide more stability to the building?
Pete? I, I'm not a structural engineer to, to be able to do that on that project. That's not my, that would be unfair for me to try to make any-
Is there anybody from representative company that could answer that question?
I can just go by what I'm, what I'm, I'm contractor and Mark said, "Yes, that brick is, that's why I did it."
But then he, I think in the, and I'm assuming everything was recorded in both meetings, he said there were other options. But again, they acted.
Any other questions? Uh, yeah, you gotta come back up here and take Ron's, uh, take Ron's place.
One of the questions you asked Ron was, uh, if you're in the middle of a visit, do you want to wait three or four weeks to get it approved? They built the wall the day before we had our meeting. So there would have been 24 hours of delay.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue on with the hearing. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against? Step forward and your name and your address for our clerk, please.
I'll do about 10 minutes, David. Leon Berry. Um, I'm the operations manager and partner of Mellow Mushroom. And I just wanted to take a minute to, um, to say that some of the things that were brought up. Um, in an ideal world, we would have gotten our original approval and we would have been built and done a couple of months ago. Um, but when dealing with the building of that age, there've been a lot of problems that we have encountered. Structural, asbestos, fire, things that have cost us quite a bit more of an investment than we originally had intended. I think when Mr. Pate, and I can't speak for him, but, uh, when he was referencing other options, um, it was a financial option at that point because of all the, the problems that we've had. And we just feel like we, we respect the downtown area. We respect Cartersville. We're very happy to be here. But the, the, the point has come, it's like, we, we had other options. This, this one was our best option to get it finished. It, it was almost to the point where, how much more is this building going to cost? And, you know, while the investment is great, um, and we're all excited to be here, that, that was probably part of the factor. Because of 150-year-old building, or 130, whatever it is, um, you know, the, the original plans were not stuck to because of that. It wasn't that we were coming up here and just kept asking for more things because we wanted to change our minds. Um, it was, it was a matter of, there were structural issues, asbestos, fire, et cetera, that we've talked about exhaustively. Um, and I would just like to point that out, that it was not a matter of us continuing to come for the board like little kids and, and be like, "Oh, well, can we have this?" Um, it was a matter of, "Okay, we've run into this problem. How can we deal with it?" Um, and I, I think, you know, obviously, we, we should have gotten permission for the, for the brick. And for that, we're sorry. But, uh, you know, we think we're, we're building a building that is going to respect downtown and make, make the area a lot better and bring people into downtown. So, thank you for your time.
Questions?
Mr. Berry, why, why does downtown appeal to you to come as an investor?
Well, uh, originally, it was suggested by Mellow Mushroom, um, and we came here to check it out. Um, and I'm originally from a small town in Texas, and it's, I, I like the small-town feel. I've been in, uh, around Cartersville, member of the Chamber of Commerce for several months now. Got to know a lot of people down here. I spend, uh, five to six days a week here, um, mostly with my wife, Chagrin. Uh, but, um, I, I love Cartersville. The people have been very welcoming, very helpful, very, like you mentioned earlier, willing to compromise about things and understand our situation. This is just one of those situations where we're kind of asking that, uh, we do get a little bit of forgiveness.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
I'll leave this hearing open. I don't want anybody to have sat here for this period of time and not had an opportunity to speak if they wish to. Anybody wishing to speak, may do so at this time. And going once, going twice, and I'll, I'll close the hearing. And, uh, counsel, that is in your hands, if you need, uh, further questions, uh, either from staff or amongst yourselves, that's fine. You are given directions during the, in the work session as to what the, uh, threshold is for making a decision. And I'll sit back and-
As you know, I was not here. Can you?
Mr. Archer, would you please restate, uh?
Not everything.
Not all, but just-
Lift notes, please.
But if he wasn't here, is he entitled here?
Oh, he wants to lead it.
Oh, yeah. The, the standard for this council to overturn a decision of the, uh, the commission is this. Now, quote from, from the ordinance. If the governing body finds that the commission abused its discretion in reaching its decision, um, you can, you can overturn it. If you don't find they abused their discretion, you probably should not overturn it. Black's Dogma Law Dictionary, uh, defines abusive discretion as this. It's an appellate court or council's standard for reviewing a decision that is asserted to be grossly unfound, unreasonable, illegal, or unsupported by the evidence. And I'll, I'll add one thing to that that I didn't cover in the expected section because the decision that was made by the, uh, by the commission was, is covered by section of, of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, uh, section 92534 E2. It says, "The commission shall deny a certificate of preservation," which is what we're talking about, "or a modification there, too, if it finds that the proposed new construction or material changes in the appearance of an existing structure would have," and here are the key words, "substantial adverse effect on the historic or agricultural significance of the historic property or historic district." And that was the decision that they were confronted with, other than the fact that it, they were asking for forgiveness instead of permission because they'd already built it.
And you said it was a side of the sentence again, substantial?
I, I'm sorry, what?
Side of the sentence, substantial.
All right. Just the key words you want, right?
Yes, sir.
Let me find that. Substantial adverse effect on the historic or architectural significance of the historic property or district.
Mayor, if I may say something before we come to perhaps a motion. Mr. Kenny and Mr. Berry, we do welcome you to Cartersville. I think we've all eaten at Mellow Mushroom's. I certainly can count five or six or seven or eight on my list. I think we're talking about something different than just a welcoming, and I, and I hope you both have heard that tonight. I hope you have heard the, the kind of way we debate things and, and our attitude about that. But before any motion is made, and I have no idea what that will be, I do say welcome to you and hope that we can be in a partnership with you as we are every single business downtown.
Well, Matt, I'll piggyback sort of again off of you earlier and, and somewhat off Ms. Diane. I mean, um, I know one thing, on the historic preservation, you guys have to go through some long classes at GMA. And I know you guys put a lot into it as, it was very evident today. But I also think that, you know, the new tenants have as well. And I think that we've all, I know that everybody's excited about anything new that comes downtown. Um, and I know for the last two or three days, we've been sweating over this as well. You know, looking at the evidence that I've seen, uh, it appears as though there is a structural issue. Nobody's debated that. The brick being there, to me, um, it would be different if they had removed structure from the building. Being that they've put more windows back in- the building, um, being that they've put more windows back in, getting it more back towards what it originally was. And yes, Mellow Mushroom's a little bit different, guys. In every store, they're different. Everybody's glad they're here. We'll see the finished product, and we'll see what, you know, if we were right or wrong. With all this being said, you know, I, I would like to see that, or, or make the motion that, uh, we accept, uh, this appeal, and, uh, we allow them to leave the brick structure
There's a motion.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If there's none, I'd like a, uh, I'd like a physical sign by raising your right hand and voting aye. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries four to one. The next item on our agenda is the financial report.
Honorable mayor and counsel, we'll be discussing the February two thousand fourteen and comparing to two thousand, two thousand, February two thousand thirteen. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The expenses have increased by one point six six million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, operating expenses, and the payment of the tans that we made back in December. Three areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis, our local option sales tax have a decrease of roughly two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Police fines and forfeiture have a decrease of fifty-five thousand dollars, and building permits and inspection fees have an increase of sixteen thousand dollars. Water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by three hundred and five thousand dollars, while expenses increased by one point four million. This is due to increased personnel, operation, and capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues have increased from last year by three point two million dollars. Expenses have increased by three point three million dollars. This is due to increased personnel, operating, and cost of purchase gas, along with capital, uh, increasing capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues have increased from last year by two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by fifty-five thousand dollars. This is due to decreased operating and capital expenses, coupled with increased personnel expenses and increased cost of purchasing electricity. In the stormwater fund, revenues decreased from last year by sixty-nine thousand dollars, and expenses decreased by three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel and operating expenses offset by decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by twenty-three thousand dollars, and expenses decreased by a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. This is due mainly to increased personnel, offset by a large decrease in capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by sixty-nine thousand dollars. Expenses have increased by sixteen thousand dollars, and this in, this increase in expenses is due to increased personnel expenses and operating expenses, coupled with a slight decrease in capital expenses. That is my report for the night.
Question for Tom on the finance report.
Just a couple of comments. The capital items that he outlined in the water fund, namely Tennessee and Ottawa, are, uh, creating that increase in expense in there. And as a side note on that, we're into budget development. We've got some state-required projects that will be utility relocations on four eleven and twenty that are creating what I would refer to as a significant deficit in the water fund. That's combined with flagging consumption in water that somewhat mirrors sales tax. They're, uh, they're not related. But just a point, that while the state continues to beat the drum of being up twelve percent, our sales tax is off February to February twenty percent. That not only impacts the city, but it impacts county government, the city schools, and county schools. Just a side note, we're into budget development, uh, there's a, there's a significant deficit in the water budget. We'll figure it out, just to, just to kind of update you on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
Yes, sir, mayor and council. Although tomorrow is a holiday for city employees, Good Friday, uh, we do have, coming up this weekend, is our, uh, the Egg Drop at Dillinger Park, starts at nine a.m. The, the egg dropping starts at ten, and will last till one o'clock. Also, Saturday morning, we have our Mountain Laurel hike at Pine Mountain, that James Gorey will be leading, uh, on, will be meeting at eight fifteen, departing at eight thirty.
That's on the east side, right?
Well, it's, it's going to be on the west side.
Okay.
But, uh, the, the Mountain Laurals aren't in bloom, but the Wild Azais are in bloom, and they're berry, it's...
Are we past the Mountain Laurel?
No, we're, we're, Mountain Laurel will be here when the movie's here, hopefully.
Cool.
So, anyway, thank you.
You're good. Thank you, Greg. Anything else? I would like to go on the record. See, this is the first time in a long time that we've had our sound system working. I want to thank a little selfishness. I, I may have held a screwdriver here and there, but Ed Rizumna, who came up here and fixed this sound system and made everybody's life a lot easier. Connie, I know you appreciate that, and I'd appreciate if you would put that in the record, that we just publicly thanked him for doing that this evening, so. Other than that, Chair Wanda Tannen, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We are adjourned. Did not get a rumpel by that guy.